Making a presentation to you on the 2013 Street Asset Management Plan. The presentation is much more than the 2013 Street Asset Management Plan. It's a long presentation. It's about 105 slides. We have a break for you at slide, I think, 65. So, just a little water break and coffee break. There's a lot of information that we've been working on in the last two months to present this information to council. We think it's all relevant information in order for you to make decisions into the future, whether that be strategic planning, budgeting processes, or whatnot. I'm John Jeffman, cool. Jeff will be doing the vast majority of the presentation this evening. I'll jump in at the very end, and Ed will probably have some color commentary as he normally does.
Color me.
Color me. So, Jeff, please.
Good evening. As Mitch mentioned, after two hours, we'll take a little coffee break, and then we'll resume and finish the presentation. This is a picture of one of our newest streets leading down to First Street Beach. Our engineer of record took a similar photo today. It shows a start reality, but it also shows the conditions that we have to maintain our street network under. Tonight, we're going to review more than just the asset management program, but we're going to review the program itself. We're going to talk about what is street asset management. We're going to talk about what's been accomplished since we adopted the current plan from 2008. We're going to talk about what the current conditions of the city's streets are. We're going to look at how other communities fund streets. We're going to talk about the level of investment that's needed, and we're going to talk about what the process is moving forward. So, to begin, there are 48 miles of streets in the city of Manistee, and they are separated into two categories. The first category are major streets, which we have close to 18 and a half miles. And you can see on the map the heavier lines. Major streets are mapped out so that as people are traveling through and into the city and from point to point within the city, these streets are built to a higher standard. They're built wider, they're built beefier, they're meant to handle higher volumes of traffic, larger traffic loadings such as semis and trucks, and they're meant to get you across the city in an efficient manner. To get to those major streets, we have 29.4 miles of local streets. Those local streets are all the collectors that come from individual businesses and houses and take you to those major thoroughfares as you traverse the city. So, in reviewing our asset management program, the next couple of slides are really about what process the city took in order to create the original asset management plan in 2008. The city had staff that attended several seminars and started learning about the asset management process and started bringing back information to the rest of the city. And it seemed like this whole asset management concept was not being followed in Manistee, but it seemed to be the upcoming, the new way that we should be managing our assets. So, as an example, Mitch and I went to a conference in Dearborn, and neither one of us had much information on it, but as soon as you sat down and listened to the training, it seemed like the light bulb going off. So, we continued to attend other seminars, asphalt seminars. We sent some of our, three of our Public Works staff to Pazer training sessions. We also hosted an asset management workshop here at City Hall for local officials. And what we wanted to do is we wanted, we wanted the city council, other members of the community, to hear the same message and the same theories behind asset management that we were hearing. And so, we started doing some internal education within the city. We also invited road agencies from around the region and had a pretty good turnout for that, if you recall. So, back in 2008, we started by reporting a draft plan and the outline to city council in the spring. And then, we also did a presentation of our process to the Michigan Municipal League later on that May. In June of 2008, similar to what we're doing tonight, we had a very long and extensive discussion on that whole concept, the plan, and broke it out into the points. And then, followed up by bringing the actual plan and the first round of candidate streets to improve to city council in August of 2008. Since that time, we presented to the Transportation Asset Management Conference. We've actually received an award from the Asset Management Council for the work that we did in establishing that road asset management program. And MDOT utilized our plan as the model across the state. As communities were starting to get into this, the similar to the way we did, and were wondering what the end product looked like, they were using the city of Manistee's asset management plan as the example. They received our permission, and we were submitting, allowing them to distribute that. In addition, we've also presented at American Public Works Conference in Gaylord in 2012. And then, when we've been constructing some of the techniques that we did, we also, at one point, invited communities from across the state of Michigan, brought them here. We toured the projects on a bus. We had hosted lunch and shared concepts and other very good discussion with road agencies. Since the city council adopted the asset management program in 2008, these are the projects that we've been able to complete in improving our road system. In 2009, we completed three and a quarter miles of pot-in-place with an ultra-thin overlay. We reconstructed the west end of 12th Street and a portion of Harbor Drive when they were damaged by a large storm. We negotiated for the reconstruction of 12th Street adjacent to the new Glenn Store when the Glenns developers were proposing their project. That was 100% paid for by the Glenns developers. We've instituted, excuse me, we've instituted a citywide crack ceiling program. We completed complete road construction in the entire Jones Street sewer district when the sewers were separated. We did major rehab to all of Golchewski and the Industrial Park and Veterans Oak Grove Drive in 2010. And on that project, we utilized MDOT Category A funding. And for our local match, we actually used some MDOT maintenance work, maintenance funding that I'll talk about further down. And when Amtech moved in, they pledged a portion of our local map, so we were able to heavily leverage that project. We completed the final section of the truck route, which included several blocks of Ige Street, 13th Street, and Main Street. And we utilized MDOT Category F funding for that, for job creation. The local match on that, the majority of the local match was paid for through a negotiated developer agreement with Reith Riley and American Materials when they put in the asphalt depot facility there. We also completed and reconstructed all of the roads in the Cedar Street sewer separation project. Those included all the roads that had to be torn up or impacted because of the sewer and water work that we did. But then, council also approved all the, what we termed the orphaned streets, all the streets that were within that district that did not have to be torn up as part of the utility work, but was within that district. So, that was over a million dollars worth of streets that were added to that project. As the first two slides show, we did complete reconstruction of First Street from the armory all the way to the west end. We also did some rehabilitation work on Spruce Street Hill between Second and Fourth Street that was damaged during a storm event. And then, Monroe Street was that project I talked about that MDOT funded for us as part of the Category A project. They paid for a heavy rehab mill and fill project and allowed us to use that project as match money on our Category A funding application. Caffey-Osco Street that was rehabbed this past year was funded through a small urban, so 80% of that project was paid for through MDOT grant money. So, you can see in the past five years, from 2009 to 2013, there have been a substantial amount of projects completed. What is street asset management? We went through this in great detail in 2008, but we recognize that there's still, there's a lot of attention on local streets. We recognize that there's a lot of new faces on councils, so we thought we would go through that again. Act 499 defines asset management as "an ongoing process of maintaining, upgrading, and operating physical assets cost-effectively based on a continuous physical inventory and condition assessment." So, in layman's terms, we simply need to take care of what we've got. When we break down what the asset management process is, there's really seven significant portions to that. And the first one is assessing the road conditions that we have. The city of Manistee and most of the state road agencies use the Pazer system, which stands for Pavement Surface Evaluation and Rating. This system does not take into consideration rideability, bumps, bangs, dips. It's simply a rating of the structural condition of the pavement, okay? When the city started embarking down the street asset management path, it decided that it wanted to get a baseline of data that was professionally completed. So, our city engineer at that time rated all of the streets within the city. Since that time, or while they were actually doing that, we also trained three of our public works staff on how to rate streets in the Pazer system and have had engineers sit in from time to time. We've had the Road Commission sit in with them. On a couple of years, we've had staff from the Michigan, Northwest Michigan Council of Governments that have rode with them, and we've sent them back through recertifications on an annual basis. So, every year, our staff rates those roads based on the Pazer system. And they do that by driving every street segment and taking a laptop, using the RoadSoft GIS software and GPS, all in conjunction to get, to collect that data. Ed Radford then processes that data and has been keeping that database, which he really wants to give to me. The Pazer manual, I won't get into the great details of this at the moment, but understanding that it rates a road from a 1 to 10, a scale of 1 to 10. 10 is an excellent road that has just been completely reconstructed, and 1 is a failed road that needs to be reconstructed and has no other maintenance options available to it. The biggest enemy of roadway is water. And if you look at the upper left-hand corner, a road structure consists of three major parts. The bottom line is the native soils or the subgrade. And in Manistee, the north side is mostly sand, most of the Maxwell Town area is sand, but where we're sitting here at City Hall and moving all the way to the south and west is a clay lens. And so, all of our roads are designed so that they will survive on whatever native clay is existing. So, typically, that consists of a 12-inch sand subbase that acts as a cushion to the roadway, but it also acts to move drainage and water that is subsurface. A gravel base, which consists of a mixture of sand, small stone, and coarse aggregate, also with a silt binder. We've also done, utilized recycled concrete and asphalt for road base in Manistee on some of our recent projects. But what we've experienced in Manistee is that over the years, and as our roads have been constructed over 100 years, there is a hotfodge of road bases. Some of the pavements are built straight on clay. Some of them are built on cinders. Some of them are built on railroad ballast. Some of them are a mixture of all of the above. As a pavement functions, and understanding that, once we get above the gravel base, then we have this layer of asphalt. Once we have a brand-new road, the only maintenance that we should have to do to that roadway is just the pavement. Once we have the proper base down, that base should last for decades and decades, and we really have to worry about that top layer. But that top layer of asphalt is flexible, and it always stays flexible. So, as a car rides on pavement, as a truck rides on pavement, that pavement will deflect when it gets loaded. It also, on days like today, when it's very cold, it contracts. And on days like we have in July and August, when it's heated up, it expands. So, where is that on pavement is that constant moving of contraction and expansion from weather changes combined with all of the loading activity that happens. And at some point, the bonds and the oils start to break. And when they break, we get a crack. Once we get a crack in that road surface and water's allowed to get in through that crack, either through melting snow or simply rains, it adds, it further destabilizes the base. It makes that base soggy, which allows for greater movement when we have loading. And essentially, this is the makings of a pothole. When that distress starts to expand, the pavement starts to crack and crack and crack and crack. And you'll see in some curves that were, that will show how fast that deterioration can So, this is a typical curve on how pavement ages. And you will see that up at the upper left, when a roadway is brand-new, it is excellent and is rated a 10 in the Pazer scale. It's able to, I can get my mouse here, it's able to survive that because those oils are new, they're still very flexible, and that pavement holds up for over a third of its lifetime. But once it starts to crack and once it starts to distress, it multiplies and it goes very, goes downhill very fast. Once it hits a point down here, all the cracking and all this distress is done, and the gravel is, or the pavement is in poor condition, but stays kind of in that poor condition. So, some key terms that we use when we're talking about road systems, especially asset management, is the critical distress point, the remaining service life, and the extended service life. The critical distress point is the point at which a pavement can no longer be rehabilitated and maintained. It is simply at the point where replacement is the only tool that we've got left, okay? The remaining service life is the time between today and when that pavement hits that critical distress point. So, we usually measure that in years. And extended life is easiest explained on the following graph. So, if we take the normal cycle of a pavement, up here at 10, we've got a brand-new road system. As it starts to deteriorate, it gets close to the solid line, which is the critical distress point. But if we intervene and we do some sort of a maintenance technique to it, so we increase the, we increase the score of that road, and we kind of reset where it starts to deteriorate again. And so, the years that that treatment adds is what we call the extended service life. So, we've pushed off the point at which the critical, we would process that critical distress point. From here, it went from, say, 14 years up to 23 years, okay? The second part of the asset management process is selecting appropriate treatments. There are a wide, a wide variety of treatments that are available, and as technologies and chemistry improve, more of those techniques are coming out. Some of those techniques that are out there work better in urban settings where we don't have curb and gutter, and we don't have a lot of manholes. But we categorize them as preventative maintenance techniques, heavy maintenance techniques, light rehabilitation, heavy rehabilitation, and then reconstruction. Critical key to asset management is identifying what the right fix is, putting it at the right time, and making sure that you're doing it in the right place. So, if we go back to that deterioration curve again, before that roadway starts to spiral downward, before it starts, the cracking gets, begins and gets in, you know, starts to multiply and multiply, we can do some preventative maintenance techniques that keeps it in that blue zone at the top. Once we allow that pavement to get down into what would be the fours, fives, and sixes in the Pazer rating, then there are other techniques that are available, such as heavy maintenance and light rehab or heavy rehabilitation. But the further down that curve we go, the more expensive those treatments are and the less bank for our buck we get. And once it passes that critical distress point, the only thing we can do with that asset is replace it, and that's reconstruction. There's a lot of information on this slide, but if you focus on the silhouettes, each of these are three different scenarios or strategies for maintaining a pavement. And each of these graphs show a 30-year period as a sample. So, at the beginning, in the upper left-hand corner, we have a brand-new road, and we let that road age and start to deteriorate without doing anything to it. And just before, or just as it gets to what would be a Pazer four, or fair condition, we decide to put a overlay on it. So, we put, we spent $80,000. My mouse is going up. We spent $80,000. So, now, we put that road right back up to great condition again, but then we let it, we let it deteriorate and fall back down. And at the end of 30 years, we've spent $80,000 on that road, and we've ended up with a road that's not, that's even less than in fair condition. So, if we take that same segment of road, and for this example, it's a mile of roadway, we start out at the beginning, and as it's going down the curve, instead of waiting until we have to put on a structural overlay, we do a seal coat. And so, we spend $20,000 for a seal coat, which resets the value of that road. We wait another 10 years, and we put another $20,000 seal coat on it, which brings it back up. And then, we let it deteriorate, and we do nothing to the end of that 30 years. Well, if you compare what these errors are showing, the road ended up in better shape, but we've spent only $40,000. So, we've spent half the money, but we've maintained that roadway in a better condition through, through that 30 years, and we've ended up with a better end product. The third scenario is where we apply a mix of fixes, okay? We use all the, all the tools in our box, and we apply them at the right time, and this road is the right place. So, at the top of the curve, we let it start to deteriorate, but at a certain point, it starts to crack. So, we implement a couple thousand dollars worth of crack sealing. Then, we, then it ages for a few years until it's in the same stage where it needs crack sealing again. So, we crack seal it for a couple thousand dollars. At some point, it cracks to the point where crack sealing isn't effective anymore. So, now, we put that $20,000 seal coat on it, and we let that age. But now that we've got that seal coat on the road, the road is kind of refreshed, and now we can go back to a couple of years of crack sealing. So, at the end, we spent $36,000, as an example, compared to the $40,000, but we've maintained that roadway through its entire 30-year lifespan in a, in a good, or in a, in a good state, and we've ended up with a good road at the end of that 30-year period. So, this is an example of how asset management is teaching us that we should be maintaining our roads in a different way than we've been doing them in the past. This example in the upper left, that's how the United States has treated their road networks for the past five or six decades, and that's why the entire country is in that same boat. And it's really philosophies that were implemented by the federal highway pushed down to the states, and the states then pushed them down to the road agents, local road agencies. So, we're not alone in this. When we look at the Pazer ratings, plumbing, salting, and sweeping, and cleaning catch basins are things that we need to do on every one of our streets. The sweeping keeps debris out of the catch basins, keeping the catch basins clean keeps the rope, keeps the ability for water to drain off of those roads. Draining water off those roads is essential in keeping the pavements healthy. So, when we're in an eight, nine, and 10 scenario, the only maintenance treatments that we do beyond our routine stuff might be our crack sealing when we, when the Pazer rating gets to an eight. And this is a picture of crack sealing. Overbanded crack sealing really is just what it sounds like. It's putting an asphalt material and filling those cracks and really keeping the water out of the pavement. The life expectancy of it is one to two years, and then you've got to revisit those roadway sections, and there's some limitations on how wide or how distressed the pavements can be. When we get into Pacers five, six, and seven, RoadSoft equates those to a fair, a roadway that's in fair condition. But at seven, six, and five, there are different treatments that become available to us, such as possibly crack sealing in the sevens, which is what's shown on the, in the picture here. Now, I've got to point out that the last round of crack sealing that the city did, we crack sealed some streets that were fours, fives, and sixes. And I can't tell you why we did that, but that's not the most cost-effective way of crack sealing. It added some benefit, but those roads are really at the point where some other treatments are necessary, such as micro-surfacing slurry seals or possibly ultra-thin overlays. So, slurry sealing is just what it sounds like. It's actually putting a slurry of material on the pavement and screeding that off. It's an asphalt emulsion with very fine aggregate and Portland cement is used as a binder. Think of the concept of a crack seal where you're, you're filling in the crack. Slurry sealing is putting a seal over the entire road surface. So, you're covering all of those cracked sealed areas, covering everything that's been cracked, and you're essentially putting a new surface on the road, but it doesn't provide any structural strength to the road. It's simply capping it, okay? Micro-surfacing is a similar product. Again, it uses a polymer modified asphalt emulsion. It uses a little heavier aggregate, and again, Portland cement as a binder. But because it's using the heavier aggregate, you can put it on in thicker layers. And so, this is, this technique is used when we've got rutting or we've got imperfections in the road surface and we're trying to smooth out the drivability of the surface. And then, this is actually a picture of some of the work that we did on 12th Street. And 12th Street was experimental. We've talked about that many times. We did a hot place on 12th Street. It was not a candidate for a hot-in-place, but we wanted to see how it would react. And then, we put an ultra-thin overlay on top of that. Ultra-thin overlays range in thickness from three-quarters of an inch to an inch and a half, and the thickness is really based on what your traffic loadings are expected to be. So, in Manistee, most of the streets that we performed the overlays on, we were, they were minor streets with low traffic impacts, so we did three-quarters of an inch. And in order to get the pavement down to that thin, you sacrifice the larger aggregate that adds the stability and the structural strength to the pavement. So, you typically see these ultra-thin overlays in conjunction with one of the other treatments. When we get into Pazer ratings of one through four, RoadSoft considers those poorer road sections. And we start getting into much more expensive treatments to try to get those back into good and fair condition. They include large structural overlays of over two inches, mill and fill activities, which we've been doing quite a bit of in Manistee, asphalt recycling, either hot or cold, and then crush and shape activities, and then certainly reconstruction once you get into the ones and twos. When structural overlays are completed, typically, those roads are aging substantially, but their base is in very good condition. And so, sometimes milling is done in conjunction with this. On this street, it looks like they did some profile milling in order to be able to match the new pavement up against the curve. the new pavement up against the curve. This was a technique that we've done quite a bit in Manistee in previous years, but really haven't done any of this since we started. Well, we've done one project on Veterans Oak Grove Drive where we did this. Again, structural overlays are two to four inches thick of hot-mixed asphalt, can be done with some profile milling, adds a lot of structural strength to the pavement structure. We actually used fiber mesh when we did Veterans Oak Grove. That pavement, the base was in very good condition, the pavement was aging, but it was thin. It was only two inches thick. So we decided to leave that existing pavement in place. We put a fiber mesh material on top of it, which helps to spread loads and stress out, and then we put a two-inch structural overlay on top of that. And that roadway is holding up very well. And then mill and fill. Mill and fill is essentially removing some depth from the existing pavement and filling it back in with a new hot-mixed asphalt. Oftentimes, this is done in two separate layers. If you mill over three to four inches, we'll pave back one layer of a base material that's got a heavier aggregate, and then we'll put in another layer of finer material. Asphalt recycling on the left-hand side is a cold-in-place operation. This is where you take the existing pavement, you actually grind it and lift it off the pavement surface, you mix it with a polymer-modified asphalt, and then you put it back down and recompact it. On the right-hand side are pictures from the hot-in-place that we performed, which heats the pavement in place, it scarifies it, still adds a polymer-modified asphalt, and then re-screeds it back down. Both of those techniques are good in rehabbing existing pavements where you've got sufficient thickness, you've got the oils that are still in the pavement, the aggregate's still there, and, but both of those techniques also require a surface treatment over the top of them. Crush and shape is used very often, is very effective. What this machine is doing is actually grinding up the asphalt surface and blending it with the existing aggregate base. And then it leaves it in place, and you pave a brand-new pavement surface over the top of that. So you're kind of beefing up your gravel base and then putting a new roadway on top of it. There's a few candidates in Manistee where that would be possible to do, but most often you see this on county roads where you don't have curb and gutter and manhole structures. And then, of course, reconstruction, which is taking the existing pavement base right down to the native soil, rebuilding it back up with a sand subbase and aggregate base and a new pavement. In Michigan, the life expectancy of a brand-new road is about 15 years. Some estimates say you can get up to 20, but after 15, 16 years in Northwest Michigan, the pavements are reaching their critical distress points if nothing else is done to them. So the third step in the asset management process is estimating each of those treatment costs that we just talked about, and then trying to work with what budget constraints we have. So walking through this chart, the left-hand side are all the different treatments that we just talked about. And the second, or the third column is the Pazer rating, where, when the Pazer ratings hit those triggers, that's when those street segments are eligible for that work. We updated these with the Spicer Group, these costs in the next column, and these are costs per lane mile of roadway. So if you look at crack sealing, typically crack sealing costs about $3,000 per lane mile. And if we go down to full reconstruction, you're reaching $400,000, $500,000 to reconstruct a lane mile of roadway. So we equated that to two lanes of street on a typical city block. And again, if we look at crack sealing, the expense for a block is about $750 versus going down to, say, the hot-in-place that we did, which costs $19,000. And then down at the bottom, full reconstruction is over $100,000 for that same block. So equating that into the remaining service life of the roadways, for spending $3,000 for a lane mile of crack sealing, we add essentially a year of life to that roadway, okay? So that's $3,000. I'm having a hard time with my mouth. So that's $3,000 is what the cost of adding one year is. If we go down to what it costs to rebuild that lane mile completely, it costs, we get 15 to 18 years of life out of that, but for every year that we've added to the life of that roadway, we had to pay $35,000. So you can see as this chart goes down, as these techniques get more expensive, we get more life out of those roads, but it doesn't, they're diminishing returns. We pay a heck of a lot more per year for what we get out of them. And what this is, and what this is pointing to us is, the best way to spend the money is before it hits that critical distress point. Once we reach that critical distress point, it is four to five times more expensive to fix our roads. Street maintenance is a very challenging perspective, as all of you, I'm sure, can appreciate. And it's really because of our, we're sunk with our legacy costs. We're sunk with the policies of the past of build it, let it age, and when it goes to hack, then we rebuild it again. And so what we've done, nobody can afford to rebuild those roads, and so now they are all slipping into that poor category because of how we managed them in the past. So we've got high treatment costs, and we have very inadequate money that comes in from the state on our Act 51 funding. And you read about it every week, every month, that Lansing is continuously debating on how to solve this problem, but none of those solutions have been put forth, and we haven't seen anything that gives us any confidence that we'll be receiving more help. By having an asset management plan and keeping it on file with the state, keeping our reports submitted, it does give us a little bit of flexibility between our major and minor streets. We have the ability to transfer up to 50% of our major street funds into the minor street funds, but the caveat is that we have to demonstrate that we're properly maintaining the major streets, and after that's done, we have to have money left over to be able to transfer. So here's a snapshot of revenue that we received from the states to maintain our road. In the past 10 years, that trend has been downward about 9.4%. So Ed put together some figures on, from this year's budget on the major street. We have revenues in the major streets of about $550,000. The routine maintenance that we perform costs about $289,000 on those major streets. We have debt service from the Streetscape project downtown that costs us $140,000 per year. And we also are moving $80,000 out of the major street fund to pay to the local street fund, which then pays for the orphaned streets that were approved with the Cedar Street project. Did I get that right, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you add up all of those expenses, we have $510,000 of expenses, and we now have about $41,000 per year to do other maintenance techniques on the streets. One important note is that that debt for River Street rolls off of, or is paid off in the fiscal year 1416. So in a couple of years, there will be $140,000 that will be available to do more street projects on the major streets. In the local street fund, it's much worse. Revenue's told $215,000 in this year's budget, and routine maintenance is $137,000. Now, that $215,000 already includes $80,000 transferred in to it from the major streets to cover that bond debt that has to be paid out. Come on, right here. So by the time we pay for the debt service that came in and goes back out, and the routine maintenance, we're still running a deficit on the minor streets, and there's no money to do any other rehab work, okay? That $80,000 debt does not come off the books until 203031. So the next step in the asset management process is trying to predict the future condition of the street network. RoadSoft, which is the computer program that we use, is very good at predicting the future conditions of the streets, as long as you keep inputting the data and doing the Pazer rating systems every year. And it uses deterioration curves, like we showed below, or showed earlier in the presentation, on what the life expectancy of the road is. Eventually, as we collect data and we continue on with this program, we'll be able to create our own deterioration curves on how roads in the city of Manistee age, not what's predicted in the model. So maybe we're getting more life out of reconstruction, maybe we're getting less life out of crack sealing or some of the other techniques. And so as the years go by, we'll keep collecting that data, and we'll be able to fine-tune those curves to fit Manistee's conditions. And this is a sample of the growth model that came out of the RoadSoft program. This is the conditions of the City of Manistee streets today. In the left-hand column, we have, in the green are the good streets that we have today. In the blue are the fair streets that we have, are the streets in fair condition, and in the red are the streets that are in poor condition. If we don't put any money into maintenance of these streets, if we just let them live as they are, you will see that the good streets go to fair pretty quickly in a matter of four to five years. All of the fair streets that we have, without any maintenance techniques, slip into the poor, and once they get into the poor, they just stay poor, okay? You have to remember that we have 48 miles of streets in the City of Manistee. All of them get a year older every year. So we lose 48 years of service life in our street network regardless of what we do to it. And that's just, that's what's shown here, is it ages and ages and ages, and the asset gets older and loses life every year regardless of what we do. So the next step is, let's establish a network of goals and performance measures for the system. And our overall goal in our current asset management is to maximize the remaining service life of the entire network. And again, we're looking at the road system as a whole, as one large unit, and trying to keep the system as a whole in the best shape possible. So that means spending the dollars as cost-effectively as possible, being smart about it, factoring into other goals, such as what Mitch mentioned might be part of your strategic planning or other initiatives. Establishing or additional performance measures would include using RoadSoft to gather data, evaluate the process and the performances of the treatments that we're doing, reporting annually to the council and to the public. Such measures is, how many lane miles did we do? How many miles did we treat? How much money was spent? What is effective? How is our remaining service life? Is it going up? Is it going down based on what we're putting into it? And then how do the streets rate from fair, good, and poor? The second and last step in the asset management process is evaluating the various treatment alternatives and the network condition. So RoadSoft, in RoadSoft, we're able to generate an infinite number of scenarios. We can, we can take the different fixes that we have, and we can prioritize if we want to do just crack sealing, if we want to do just slurry sealing, if we want to do just straight-out reconstruction. And we can also put in various budget constraints. If we put in $0, what happens? If we were able to put in $100,000? If we could put in $1 million a year, what would happen? And so for the scenarios that we've got coming up, we're looking at a do-nothing, we're looking at the current funding level, and then assuming that $140,000 of debt service on the major streets, when that comes off, being able to put that into the program as well, and then we're going to look at some of the funding levels. So like I said, when we create those different scenarios and those models, it's appropriate to look at the major streets differently than the minor streets. And then also, RoadSoft uses an optimizing tool that takes a look at the mix of fixes, takes a look at what our goals are for the street network, and what monies are available, and the different tools that we have determined are appropriate for Manistee, and it will suggest a program to follow. And then again, we can analyze those with the current funding and enhanced funding, and then be able to tell whether or not we're reaching our goals. Now, some variables that we're not able to put into this are, you know, future grant opportunities. We don't, we have not built in any future grant opportunities because we don't know when they're going to be there or when they're going to be awarded. We're not able to predict inflation into the cost of all the treatments, and we have no idea whether state funding is going to increase or decrease. So all of those are just assumed to be stable and flat. So the last portion of the asset management process is to identify, prioritize, and to actually select projects. Based on the Pazer rating, the best way to select projects in asset management is to look at what projects are available in their windows of opportunity, and that's before they get to that critical distress point. We utilize different engineering aspects to look at road segments, and we also look at the road base. If you build a house on a failing foundation, you will end up with a failing house, and it's no different than a road. If you pave, you could pave a brand-new street over a failed base, and you will have a failed street in the process. As favorite example is Memorial Drive. When work was being done on Memorial Bridge, M.D. resurfaced Memorial Drive from Washington Street to 31, but they did no work on the base material, and within two years, all the cracking came back through, and all that pavement failed. It was, all it did was help them with the detour, but it provided no benefit to the road itself. Also, we need to take into account traffic data. How much traffic are on these roads? What type of traffic are on these roads? We look at future infrastructure projects. Do we have any planned water sewer projects that we can leverage for the work? We're always looking for grant funding or other development ways to leverage money. Other considerations would be goals and objectives in the strategic plan from city council, conditions of the sidewalks and curb and gutter surrounding them, other economic impacts such as commercial developments. How do we, excuse me, how do we fairly disperse these projects across the city so that we're not lumping them in one segment of the community? Mobilizing of contractors is actually pretty critical because a lot of these rehab techniques are pretty specialized. When we bid, we bid the Category A project and the small urban, or the Category F project, so the truck route and the industrial park work, we bid those in close conjunction with each other because we knew that the fiber mesh contractor would only have one mobilization on that. So we saved $12,000 by bidding those in close proximity to each other. We did the same thing with First Street. When we rebuilt First Street, if you remember, we had a lot of long conversations with city council, and it was a very conscious decision to hold off a little bit on rebuilding First Street so that we can take advantage of the Cedar Street sewer project and maintain better unit prices on those. And we actually created some competition between contractors and probably saved about 10% on that project. There's also other issues like safety, if we need to correct safety issues that we're aware of, or other future projects. All that information is shared and spread and discussed across a cross-functional team on the city staff and utilizing our engineering consultant. We apply the asset management principles. We evaluate all the candidates based on the criteria. We try to logically look at staging of the work and scheduling it. Certainly, we have to work within the budget limitations. And then the next step in the process is to create a map and the cost estimates for those and bring them to city council.
Would you like a break, or would you like to keep going?
Yeah, I just have one question. Do you know how many cities in the state utilize the asset management plan?
That's further on inside this document.
Okay.
This report, council.
Okay.
Beginning in 2009, the city has upgraded a total of 10.9 miles of streets within the City of Manistee. That's rehabilitating- That's rehabilitating close to 23% of all the streets in the city. That breaks down as four miles of major streets, or about 22.4% of all of our major streets, and 6.8 miles of local streets, or 23% of our local streets have been upgraded since we've adopted the asset management program. And we'd like to point out that none of those totals include the crack sealing. The crack sealing that we've done citywide is on top of all of that. So when we look at the projects that we've completed, you look, the category A project that we talked about is Golchewski and Veterans Oak Grove up here, the Mill and Phil project that we did on Monroe Street that was paid for throughout MDOT, the Hot and Place and Ultra Thin that was done on the north side, including, I believe, the Second through Fourth avenues, the reconstruction of the streets on the Jones Street Sewer Project, the reconstruction of the streets within the Cedar Street Sewer Project, rebuilding of First Street, the streets up in Golden Acres were rehabbed with the Hot and Place and the Ultra Thin overlay, Ramstall and Davis Street down in Maxwell Town were rehabbed with the Ultra Thin overlay or Ultra Thin overlay and the Hot and Place, reconstruction of 12th Street in conjunction with the Glenn Store, the Mill and Phil project on Kaziasko this summer, and then the last segment was the last three segments of the truck route that we built using the category A funding or category F funding and then contributions from Reese Riley. So when you look at how, what major streets have been impacted, you'll see that they're spread out pretty thoroughly through the city. And when we look at the minor streets, again, they're spread out quite a bit through the city, and it's a lot of streets that have been impacted. There's a lot of information here, so I'll just point out some of the summaries. But basically, these are all of the projects that we've completed on the left-hand side, their year, their total cost, and those projects total $8.7 million of roadway improvements that we've been able to accomplish since the asset management program was adopted. 1.8 million of those dollars came out of the street funds and, or has been pledged to come out of the funds, correct Ed? And then $4.9 million has come from other city revenue sources, such as the water sewer funds, and then we've been able to leverage another close to $2 million of grant money or developer inputted money. So if you look straight at the street fund versus what we've been able to leverage from outside sources, we're on about a one-to-one leveraging. And overall, we've done about 23% of the road projects that we've completed, we've been able to leverage outside funds to complete the projects. We look at the condition of the existing city streets, the distribution between good, fair, and poor, as is calculated by Roadsoft, shows that we've got 20% of the city streets are in good condition, 35% of the streets are in fair condition, and 45% of the streets overall are in poor condition. When we separate those into the major street categories and minor street categories, you see that the distributions change quite a bit. In the good category of major streets, we have 22%, in the fair, we have 52%, or about half, and in the poor, we've got about a quarter or 26%. When we look at the distribution of the local streets and their condition, we see that 18% of the streets are categorized in good condition, a quarter of those streets are in fair condition, and over half of our streets in Manistee are in poor condition. That's kind of the bad news. The good news is that the work that we've been doing, we've actually increased the number of miles that are in good condition on all the streets in the city of Manistee. We've increased the number of streets that are in fair condition in the city of Manistee since adopting the asset management, and we've been able to reduce the number of poor streets overall in the city of Manistee. On the major streets, those trends continue, where we see an increase in the good streets, an increase in the fair streets, and a reduction in the poor streets that we have overall. And in the minor streets, we have also doubled the amount of good streets that we have through these efforts. We've increased by close to 50% the amount of fair streets that we have, and we've had a slight reduction in the poor streets. So to summarize, in our major street system, 74% of our streets are either classified as good or in fair condition. That means that 74% of those streets are candidates for different maintenance techniques, and a quarter of them are no longer candidates and are subject to reconstruction. On the other side of that, the local streets aren't in as good a shape. 43% of those candidates are in good or fair condition, which means that they're eligible for our maintenance techniques, but over 50% of them have failed and are no longer able to be maintained with those techniques. They will have to be reconstructed. So how does Manistee compare to other communities several, or similar to ours? The Asset Management Council collects and compiles all the federal aid road data that's submitted by every agency. And again, in Manistee, that becomes our major street data. So every road agency has to submit those reports, but on the non-federal aid reports or the minor streets, those are submitted to the state on a voluntary basis. Manistee submits all of it on both networks. So we're able to look at how the entire state compares with us on the majors and a smaller sampling of the minor streets. And they publish a website that we're able to look at and pull the following data from. On the federal aid roads in the state of Michigan, the trends are opposite of what they have been in the past five years in Manistee. The amount of good roads has been decreasing, and those are miles of good roads as a percentage. The percentage of fair roads has been decreasing, and the amount of poor roads in the state of Michigan have been increasing substantially. That's just the opposite of what we've been able to accomplish, but this is looking at it from a statewide perspective. When we look at some of the neighboring communities or some of the communities that have been put out there by the public as comparables, Manistee is shown on this graph in the dark blue. Cadillac is represented in red. Luddington is a goldish color. Petoskey is in a lighter blue. St. Joe is in green, and Grand Haven is in yellow. So when we look at how the percentage of our streets that are in good condition, we see that we're above the median for this group of our peers. When we look at the fair-conditioned streets, we actually lead this group in the amount of, the percentage of streets that are in fair condition, and we're almost, almost have the lowest percentage of streets that are in poor condition. So when we look at this particular group, we're actually faring quite well. Looking at it from another perspective on the federal aid, if we look at all the good and fair streets combined, the first column here is the state of Michigan, and the amount of streets that are either in fair or good in the entire state, it steps up slightly when you look at northern Michigan, or I think that's it from Claire North roughly, but not including the upper peninsula. And then the next bar is Manistee, and so we've used this golden line to kind of show as a benchmark on where we're at compared to everywhere else. And then you can continue on the chart and look at where Luddington, Cadillac, Petoskey, Charlevoix, Boyne City, South Haven, Holland, Grand Haven, St. Joe, Montague, Whitehall, Northville, and Traverse City, how all of them compare on their federal aid streets compared to Manistee. And again, that grouping from the last couple slides is right in here, including the state and northern part of Michigan.
We just need to make sure that we're talking about the federal roads. We're talking about major roads, not local roads.
Right.
And that designation, and that just needs to be identified.
When we go to the non-federal aid roads, or what we call our local streets, it doesn't compare in the same way, but the average over the state of Michigan from the Transportation Asset Management Council shows that we have a much higher percentage of local streets that are in good condition, but we have a similar discrepancy when we compare to the state in our fair-conditioned roads, and we're within 5% on the poor roads with the state average. So just showing you another perspective. So what level of investment is needed? That's the big question. If we assume that the current funding scenario stays the same for our major streets, and that in two years, when the River Street debt is dropped, and we're able to take that money and keep investing it into the major road network, and we don't include any scenarios for additional bonding, additional revenues, or any other grant money, and we put that into Roadsoft, Roadsoft optimizes all of our candidates, all of our data, and looks at the money that's available over that 10-year period, and what it's recommending is that in the first five years, that we do mostly light preventative maintenance work. So basically, we're trying to keep our good roads good. In years five through eight, we start getting into heavy preventative maintenance, which starts getting into the mill and fills and that sort of work. And then in years eight through 10, to begin doing some construction work. So we want to show you what that looks like on these graphs. And over on the left-hand side and in this middle are charts that are created in Roadsoft so that as it's going through the optimizer, we can actually adjust those, we can raise one up or we can raise one down. But this is, this data on the left-hand side are all of the treatments that we have selected as appropriate in Manistee. It also identifies what the current costs are, so we've been put that into the formulas. And then it also compares what the current Pazer ratings are versus what those treatments will, how they will change them, and how they will react to the deterioration curves. So what you see in this graph at the top right-hand corner is, again, the major streets that we have in their current condition. So we've got a small percentage that are in good condition, the bulk of them are in fair condition, and we've got some that are in poor condition. By starting out with those light preventative maintenance techniques, we're able to take quite a bit of our fair streets, and we're able to bring them up into the good range. In doing that, we're losing some of the fares that move into the poor category, okay? But that trend continues on for that first four or five years. And then we get into the optimized maintenance schedule, that starts doing some of the heavy preventative maintenance, which is mill and fills. Now, we're spending the same amount of money, but those techniques are much more expensive, so we can impact less roads by doing them. And so you start to see as we go from heavy maintenance and then into the reconstruction, that even though we're pulling down and we're starting to impact the poor roads, and we're bringing those up into good, these good roads are starting to slip into the fair. That's the optimize, that's our best-case scenario that's been determined by Roadsoft.
Jeff, could you go over some major roads in the city, just so everyone knows which ones you're referring to? Just some examples of major roads.
Of existing major streets? Maple Street, Cherry Street, 12th Street, 8th Street, 5th Street, First, all the streets in the downtown, Fifth Avenue, Washington, Monroe Street, Kaziasko's a major street. Yeah, and we can go back at that map if we need to look at that.
I just have to point just to name a couple of those that we're talking about.
If we were able to add an additional $200,000 a year into that funding scenario that we just looked at, and continue to optimize our treatments on the roads, putting the right fix at the right time, we would see that in our current state, we can very quickly increase our fair, or move our fair roads into good. And at some point, which is, you know, which is projected in the third year, we actually start running out of candidates for fair roads to put up into that good, so then that money starts moving into the heavy maintenance and the reconstruction. So then, we're able to take our major streets and remove almost entirely the poor roads that we have on the major streets, and we're actually able to put the, close to half of our roads in good condition, and the second half in fair condition, and then continue on that trend. So that money shows a tremendous impact on the overall health of the network. On the local streets, if you remember when I went through the expenses and revenues, we essentially have no money in that fund. So let's assume that we've got $5,000 that we're able to utilize on that, which will fund really some preventative crack sealing. And if we do nothing on that for five years, you'll see that in our current state, the majority of our roads are already in poor condition, and with that light amount of funding, we can keep the good roads in decent condition for a while through that crack sealing, but eventually, they fall off and they're not candidates anymore. And all the roads that we have that are in fair condition start to fall off, and they go below the critical distress point, and they go to the poor condition, and we end up in a very scary scenario 10 years out. Almost 87% of our roads would be projected in poor condition. So like we modeled with the major streets, if we were able to put another $200,000 per year over a 10-year period, here's the kind of change that that could make potentially on our minor street, or the local street network. We start off with, again, the same mix of road conditions that we have today, but we're able to immediately put money into the fair streets and bring them up into good condition, and as those candidates run out, we're able to maintain the good streets in good condition, but we're starting to eat away at, eat away at the poor streets, but just barely. I mean, it barely changes that dynamic. And it ends up after 10 years that half of our streets are still failed, and half of them are in very good condition.
You're asking yourself a question, why don't we, at the end of that 10 years, have any of the streets in fair condition? It's because you're going from a poor to reconstruct, so there's no heavy rehabilitation, there's no light rehabilitation can do to the poor streets. They are reconstruction candidates, so you're taking a one through four up to eight men or 10 automatically. So that's why you have that void of fair streets in that particular scenario.
And then we're also doing the light maintenance techniques on those streets to maintain them in that condition for this 10-year cycle. But if we extend that out another 10 years, you'd start seeing some of those streets that were in good condition eventually getting back into that compression. Right. If you were able to double that and now put in an additional $400,000 a year just towards the local streets, then you could see that, again, we run out of candidates on our fair streets, because we're able to get those all to the good stage, but then we start really eroding down the poor streets that we have in the city, and we're able to convert those into good streets and then keep those in good condition. So what that really shows is that it takes money to change this dynamic. So one of the things that is very easy to jump to conclusions on is, why don't we just rebuild my street? My street has failed, and I want a new street. So what we did is modeled, what if we did not use the mix of fixes? What if we were able to put $200,000 of local street money in, more than we are today, and we simply went to rebuilding streets? And how would the network react to that? So again, on the left-hand side is the current condition of our minor streets, our local streets, and as we put $200,000 a year in, the good streets begin to fall off into the fair streets, and we're able to take poor streets and make them good. So we're taking from the bottom, and we're putting them on top, but we lose ground, because we have, I don't remember the number, 18 miles or, oh, it was more than that?
29 miles.
29 miles of service life that we're losing every single year, and we're only... And we're only, we're only building a half a mile of brand-new streets that has 20 years of life, and so you just lose ground by doing that. If you allowed us to take that $200,000 and put it and optimize it for the street network as a whole, then you can see how that dynamic changes. It's the same dollars, it's the same timeframe, it's the same street candidates, but we're able to take fair roads and make them better and we're able to slowly start to reconstruct some of the poor roads and keep them in good condition. So this was the old style that the nation has done for decades, and this is where the world is moving to in what we consider to be the best practice now. So the level of investment that's needed, you can see what a do-nothing alternative does. We lose 48 miles of service life in the roads every year by doing nothing. Overall, the current funding that we've got is not adequate to maintain the streets, it's not adequate to make any difference. If we, with the $150,000 that we would repurpose from the bond debt on River Street, if we're able to use that and use it the smartest way we can, the best-case scenario is that we keep the status quo. The network stays in the same condition as it is on the major streets. It would take $350,000 per year of additional revenues into the minor street or the local streets in order to, I'm sorry, in the major streets in order to eliminate the poor roads that exist there. On the local street side, the money that's currently available is not doing, is essentially the do-nothing alternative is where we're at. $200,000 a year at best results in a street network that's half in fair condition and half in poor condition, good or fair. And then it means $1.5 million a year, every year, in order to get that street network into 95% good condition.
And that's over 10 years, correct?
Yes.
1.5, four, 10, 10 years.
1.5, 15, 15 million dollars.
It's really expensive to burn, to bend that curve up. It's really expensive to show improvement once the majority of your payments have already passed that critical distress point. So how do other communities fund streets? This is where I get to rest a little bit and Mitch takes over.
But I want to come in and say, one thing just to kind of keep in mind, when we adopted the asset management plan in 2008, we did some preventative maintenance treatments right away with the hot and flash. And then we've done some crack sealing. But the rest of those projects that you saw on there really were not the classic asset management techniques. And the reason for that is we knew we had sewer separation projects, we knew we had grant funding, we knew we had developers. There's only so much that you can accomplish at one time. And we spent, as you saw, $8 million on streets over that five-year period, you know, in conjunction with different projects. So the real point is, now I believe that the next five-year period is really we're going to have to focus and redouble our efforts on the preventative maintenance because there aren't any more sewer separation projects, there aren't any more big grants, you know, you'll get an occasional grant. And as you can see, it's really important that you do that in order to keep those fair streets and move them up into good and keep those good streets well. If we fail in the next five years in doing preventative maintenance, we will have a big bill to pay down the road. There's a small window of opportunity here to do some of those techniques. And the way it's worked out is simply because of all of the other projects that we had in those five years, it gives us a position now where we've got a bunch of good streets to keep on there.
Well, in the next five years, if we don't maintain, if we don't maintain the asset like we need to, we'll lose all the ground that we've made in the past five to six years.
Okay. A natural question that we traditionally deal with council is, how do other communities do certain projects? Benchmarking, we benchmark ourselves in all of our white papers. It's not to say that every community is an apples-to-apples community, they're not. But I think it still gives good information about how other communities are doing things and we can always take examples and learn from those other communities. So we've embarked upon the benchmarking, how do other communities fund streets? We've embarked upon the benchmarking in November and December of this year. We asked a variety of street-related items, included funding. We've tried to look at our peer communities, Livingston, Boyd, City, Montague, Whitehall, Northville. It's not to say Northville is a comparable community to the City of Manistee, they're just on the list. They always participate, they're always easy to get information from. And if you, if you work with these folks and you know how hard it is to extract information from busy folks in your own lines of work, anytime someone's willing to participate in the survey and help you out, we usually involve those individuals. Potaski, Charleboy, South Haven, Howland, Grand Haven, St. Joe Cadillac. So we run from, I think, 2,500 Montague, 3,500 Boyd in population, up to probably 30,000 and Howland and everywhere in between from that criteria. So again, not exactly apples-to-apples, but still can show you what they're doing to address their streets. 12 out of 26 that we had got information from had street asset management plans, over only two out of this had state-approved asset management plans as a 2012. I found that really interesting. I thought that number was going to be significantly higher based on the fact that there was a little bit more flexibility given to those communities that had street asset management plans.
And the answer to your question, Catherine, is 32 out of 653 local road agencies have state-approved plans, and that's the latest data.
So 32. 14 out of the 26 had some kind of a, sort of a, a street millage, either a local or a county. There were several county millages where the county had a millage and the city, whatever percentage of their, whatever percent they were of the population got that as, that allocation towards their streets. 15 out of the 26 had some general fund contributions to streets, one had an income tax. I have to look around here. 6 out of the 26 had used some form of special assessment to fund streets. Here is the information. And the other thing is, is that you're getting a lot of information tonight, a tremendous amount of information this evening. We are going to be posting the entire PowerPoint on the city website, so council members will have access to that if they want to go back and review it, as well as citizens will have access to go onto the city website and review the information and ask questions that they may have. So what we ask really is, the community, what are the total miles of streets? Do you have a street asset management plan? Didn't really say whether it was a state-approved or their own, but just whether or not you have street asset management. What does one mill generate in your community? This is very, very important. And mills based upon the tactical value of the individual properties. And you'll see some pretty significant discrepancies right off the bat as to what does one mill generate. Potaski, for an example, has a pretty similar road network, a little bit less nuts. Their population's about 5,000, ours is 6,200. Similar communities in a lot of different ways, vastly dissimilar communities in regards to what one mill generates. Voted street millage. How many communities have a voted street millage that they have put forward to help address this particular issue? I'd kind of go through it. Here is the example of the county millage, Air Pro-Town. So they have, the county has a four-mill, 15-year county street millage and I believe that is in, I think it's Charleboy County, Charleboy or Antrim, one of the, up there. I think it's Charleboy. Boyd City gets one mill out of the four, for example. Potaski has a 3.85 mills dedicated towards streets. They generate $1.5 million a year that they're able to put towards their street funds. General fund contribution, if they did make a general fund contribution and they were able to give us the date of that, we wanted to make sure we included that. Livingston, for example, you can see what they're doing and the other communities. Use of special assessments. Are you a 20-mill home rule city? We only asked that question because how many communities were bumping up against that 20? A lot of these are either a 20 or a 15-mill home rule city. And what is the total mills levy per site? So we did that. And here is another range of communities. Again, this is all going to be available for you. Again, you can see some significant discrepancies and on what mill, one mill generates. Voted street millages, again, you're seeing more voted street millages. A couple of Cadillac, 10 years ago did have a, do a special assessment. The special assessments appear to be far and few between. They weren't, did not appear to be a popular option of the communities that we did the survey with. Again, same one, home rule communities and total mills levy. And then this would be the last page of that again. What we did is we started with our local benchmark communities and then I sent this out on a listserv, the city manager listserv, which is the reason you got Sturgis, Grosspoint, Lowell Claire, and all the other communities wanted to be included in that. And I thought if they're going to send us the information, there was no harm on putting it on this spreadsheet for you to look at. Some of these we actually have general law villages, but some of the rules are slightly different than a home rule city per cent. But again, still, it's just supposed to be information, really doesn't give you any concrete information of how you move forward, but it does help you understand how other communities are looking at the street systems and how they're going about it. Mayor Kenny and I talked about this a couple of times and wanted to also investigate when we're looking at things, what is our peer tax burden compared to the city manatee compared to other individuals? Often you hear of the high millage rate in the city manatee, we all know that, but we hear that over and over and over again in conversations. So we wanted to do a little bit of research on that also and present that information. So again, a survey was done this last couple of months. We asked about roads and millage rates, local county schools. So we're really going for, here's a PRE, a principal residency exemption. Each and every one of you sitting up on council has a principal residency exemption, I'm assuming that you have in your homes in the City of Manistee. The non-PRE are for those individuals that have a second home in the City of Manistee. And the difference between a PRE, which is your primary home, and a non-primary home, if you will, is that 18 additional mills, which is tapped on by the State of Michigan for school taxes. So services, you know, and again, Ed put this together, what millage rates are only part of the story. What services are being provided, what's the community's tax base, that was really about what the, what one mill generated showed and highlighted. And what's the average value of homes? We know the average value of a home in Potaski, Charleboy is higher than in the City of Manistee. And therefore, it's going to generate a higher mill rate on a total than the City of Manistee. Straightforward. No surprise, straightforward. What we're trying to show here is we're trying to identify what were the different operating, what did communities have millage rates for? What did they allocate millage rates for? Both city, county, and then kind of other ISD and school. And this chart really just kind of, and you can go along if you choose to, to look at how other communities are different from how the City of Manistee operates things. Other communities such as Grand Haven has a very diverse, you know, a lot of different various millage rates on how they, on how they're doing things. This line here will show you what is the, what is the city millage rate? So we know from the City of Manistee, it's 18.4457. That hasn't changed in how many years? Several, three, four, something in that nature. Council strategic goal to not increase that millage rate over the last several years. Livingston is 15.79. So two and a half, three, three almost. London participates, South Haven, 14.33, Grand Haven, 15.422, Northville, 19.3307. Cadillac's also pretty high, quite frankly. Potaski, 13. Take into account, Potaski's is low, but look at what one mill generates per dollar. Charleboy, 13.69. And then you come on down here to this blue line. I gotta re-try on it, council board. So you're good. 40.644. And if you were, so for non-PRE, so secondary homes, that number is 58. So non, if you have a second home in the City of Manistee or Manistee County, not the Manistee County, excuse me, in the City of Manistee, that would be, that number would be 58 mills right down here. So this gives you, I think, a benchmark of what the other communities are paying compared to the City of Manistee when you look at it from a total, I call it just a total local tax burden. Schools, county, City of Manistee. I'm not city, but city, city mills. So, and again, we try to break that down as much as possible in order to you see that from a diverse perspective. There was also a request to look at it from a general fund breakdown. This really doesn't have anything to do with the previous slide here. This just is for our general fund budgets. How do those individual communities, how do they break down? How do they spend their general fund money? We're still going to get information from Boyd and Cadillac, so we want to expand upon this list, but these are the communities that have responded to us in order for us to allow us to put this presentation together. So you can see the City of Manistee spends 30% in the public safety, that's police and fire for us. The difference for us compared to a lot of different communities is a full-time fire department and EMS. The community has been dedicated, the citizens have been very forthright and honest about their desire to maintain a full-time fire department and EMS. I've heard that loud and clear over the years. And we have made strides to improve the fire department through advanced life support and various other means, but they account for 30%. PPW of parks, 24%. Other, that would be the city manager's office, clerk, finance, treasurer, various other things, assessing, buildings, thank you, 33%, and then we have 13% in debt service. And Ed, could you explain our other communities?
Well, just the caveats below that where it says general fund comparisons can be picky. The reason they call it a general fund is because it's the catch-all for everything else that's not in its own independent fund. And communities have a lot of leeway in how they set up their accounting system, whether they want to track stuff in a separate fund or not. So in this case, Manistee records all of our general obligation debt in the general fund. And we have two general obligation debt issues. We have the city hall bond and we have the capital improvement bond that was issued to help fund all of the projects in street reconstruction and water and sewer separations. So in that case, since we're recording that in the general fund, it shows as a higher percentage. Some communities recorded those debt issues in what they call a debt service fund. So there's some differences there. The mix of services that are being provided can be different between communities and that doesn't show in these percentages necessarily, or they can be accounted for differently. And finally, shared costs may be allocated differently depending on what community you're in. But it just gives you kind of a general idea of what different communities are doing.
And again, the intent of this slide was just to show a breakdown on how other communities allocate for the general fund dollars. I honestly thought Livingston would have a lower public safety cost factor there with the fact that they have a volunteer fire department or paid-on call fire department. I just, I just thought intuitively that I would see that number lower. Grand Haven has cross-trained officers, public safety. They are firemen and policemen together. That number's always been high for us when I was in Grand Haven. That number was always up there. So this just really shows, Manistee records our general fund debt as that indicated. Mix of service things can be different, accounted for in different funds, we all know that. And the shared cost may be allocated differently in the general fund budget. So again, we're going to continue to increase those numbers and get that information, but we wanted to show that tonight to council also. So what are the options for street funding? We've gone through a lot of information this evening. Bottom line is, is that it's exceedingly expensive to maintain our streets. Again, if we don't invest in our streets, we saw what the ramifications will be in the future if we don't look at doing something different than we currently are. So we've also tried and wanted to bring to you this evening some options for you to think about. Number one, we'll continue as always to, to work towards achieving grants. The grants allow us to get a greater leveraging of our money. For example, on the Kosciusko small urban, that was an 80/20 match. So we were able to spend 20% of that cost and get 80% paid for from the State of Michigan. We can't afford to turn those ones down. It's just too good of a deal for us to continue to get those deals. to get those deals. General fund allocation, either fund balance or annual appropriation, that's something that we can talk about, council with council. We can always talk about special assessments. You saw that it wasn't a very popular option for other communities to look at special assessments. We are currently 4.6, .4655 mills below our headly cap. That .4655, if council chose to raise that up to our current headly cap, would generate $88,000 that could be used towards that. If council chose to go forward with a headly override and bring our millage rate back up to the 20-mill max community, which is in our charter, that would generate an additional $425,000. So, if you, between the $88,000 and $425,000, if you increase that back up to the 20 mills, you would generate approximately another half-million dollars that could be available. This would violate, this would currently violate the council's strategic plan of not increasing millage rates. So, has to be addressed in some form or fashion under those discussions. But those are the options that, that we felt were available. Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you. Voted bond debt millage, we've done that in the past. Capital improvement fund. You can see how we have allocated the capital improvement fund over the next several years. So, for the next four years, it's committed to $290,000. It drops off to $220,000 after that, through 2026, 2027. However, there are some unobligated funds in the capital improvement fund. Here's one through three. You could generate additional $50,000 to be allocated towards various projects. Here's four is $90,000. Your six through 10 will get us up to $120,000. This would occupy all of the capital improvement funds, and you wouldn't be able to put that towards any other projects, other than if you allocated that towards streets. The oil and gas fund, override spending road to tap XX earnings, that's something that council could also look at, at your discretion. So, from our position, when we are going through these slides and putting together this presentation for council this evening, we wanted to do a wrap-up of, what are the takeaways from all this information that we had? The city has a sophisticated, award-winning street asset management program. It's a dynamic program, or one of the few at the state that actually has a state-approved program, and it works. And we've seen how it works. We have improved streets over the last five years. Our streets do compare favorably with our peer communities. The investment over the last five years is not sustainable. 2012 is a high point in network condition. The opportunity for preventive maintenance is large, but as those slides show, that window of opportunity is closing. Additional funding sources will be needed to improve or maintain, thanks, I'm sorry, to improve or maintain the network. So, process moving forward. So, again, we provided a lot of information this evening to council. From, from my position, I see the next step as council starting conversations and discussions. Those conversations and discussions will, will turn into the strategic planning process, the strategic, the strategic planning process, then will lead into the budgeting process. And then based upon the budgeting process, it could either lead for the 2014 construction season, or, depending on council, for example, if council chose to, put out a, go for a voted millage for the street, or had the override, which would be one of the same in this situation. By the time we did all of the educational material and presented that educational material to the, to the citizens of Manistee, allowing them to make an informed and educated decision as to whether or not this makes sense to them or not, we're probably looking at a November of '14 vote. I think that would be honestly the very earliest that we could present all that information, educate the public, hold public hearings, obtain public comment sessions, counsel to hear from the citizens, and moving forward under those scenarios.
We would have public hearings on either a headly override or a voted millage.
I can imagine under any scenario that we would not. Again, we're going to put this PowerPoint, and I, the last time we talked about this, we, when we were doing the street asset management, we presented it to council. It was a four to five-month process for us to present that information to council, have educational sessions, go get training, the training to council. So, this was a recap tonight. This is in no way, shape, or form supposed to be the, the total discussion that council and staff and the citizens will have on streets, street asset management, and our local streets or our major streets. It was only supposed to be the starting point for those conversations and discussions tonight, moving forward.
And I would like to let council know that the updated plan itself, this is just the presentation on the plan, the updated plan itself in draft format, because Mitch hasn't had a chance to look through it yet, is in the Dropbox under Reports and Studies, it's called 2013 Asset Management Plan, so you can take a look at that. It recaps a lot of what's here, but it's got it in more of a narrative form, and I think it was another way to understand what's going on.
And as soon as that's taken out of draft format, that too will also then be placed on the city website for all citizens to have access to that document as well.
I would like to see, you know, some citizen input even before, you know, we get to the final stages of it.
So, what, can you, help me understand what that means? So, we are...
Just, you know, let citizens comment on, on what we presented here tonight. And I'd, I would hope the citizens would come to the meetings and comment on this plan that we've, we've presented tonight.
But again, that, what we presented tonight really is, an update to the street asset management plan. Not really, I, I mean, the plan to move forward is to be determined. The plan to move forward is to be determined, do we maintain the current level of funding? Do we increase the current level of funding? If we increase the current level of funding, where does that funding come from? How do we, how do we, how do we, how do we assess the streets? How do we determine which streets are the right streets to go, the right fix, the right method, the right time, as we talked about? So, I think the plan is to come. I think, under any scenario, we have to solicit and receive public input, either through the emails, which I know you have been getting emails, obviously, as well as public hearings and meetings. If we choose to go forward with, if we choose to go forward, if council chooses to look at some alternative methods, such as a voted millage and stuff like that, we would want to prepare an entire plan, if you will, and then present that to the public to help educate. So, there's, there's a lot of information here tonight that was presented. No assumptions are being made by staff as to which direction we're going. One of the things that I thought was really important was for this to be leading into the strategic planning process, and really to get council thinking about the strategic planning process. We're going to be doing that in less than a month, after the holidays, the first of the year. And what level of emphasis do we want to put on this? Where are we at with this right now? We've got all of our CSO projects done, we've done a lot of other projects. It's a time now to slide into this. There's a lot of different avenues, and I think that strategic plan then really sets the foundation for moving forward.
That's the January 14th.
I don't, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but that, somewhere right around that time. I'm not sure what the 2nd, 13th, January is. I can tell you just a second.
It's 14.
14? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One of, one of the things that may be helpful, because so much information was presented tonight, what may be helpful is to give you an opportunity to think about it, go ahead and look at it online again, and then maybe have a session next week, where if you have some additional questions coming backwards, and give you a time to think about your questions. Because I just knew that there'd be so much information presented tonight, it would be difficult to absorb and, and put your questions in order. So, we may be able to answer some of those questions next week, on the 17th, if council has some.
I'd like a hard copy of all the benchmarking that you've...
Sure. Sure.
Thank you.
Just, I'll get ahold of you. Get a copy of that to you.
Email? And I'll just print out myself, pick an email.
Is, is this small enough email, the PowerPoint?
Post it, you can...
Yeah, we'll put the...
It's okay.
PowerPoint in the Dropbox.
Okay.
Can you just grab it? Just grab it.
I guess if anyone in the audience had questions to email those as well, so we can get everyone, or anyone at home who watches this, has questions from it, also email you so we can get those questions answered.
Yeah, and again, they can go on the city website to have the file and look at it. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.